Welcome to our July 6th Ordinary Council meeting for Latrobe City Council. As the Victorian Government's COVID-19 emergency measures have set out for us, the Local Government Act of 2020 now has new mechanisms that allow us to meet virtually, that the councillors can dial in virtually, and we have the provision to close the meeting to the public as long as we livestream that. So which is what we're doing at the moment, and this is, we've done this a couple of times now. We're getting good at it, but we would like to eventually be back in a room together. But we welcome people through this measurement tonight as we go out. So we will start the meeting and welcome everyone to it. The first item is the opening prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for the kingdom and the power and the glory are yours now and forever. Amen. As we're meeting on multiple sites, we still would like to acknowledge the traditional owners, the land. And I would like to acknowledge that I'm meeting here today, and we are all meeting here today on the traditional land of the Brackalong people, of the Gunnai-Kurnai nation, and pay my respects to their elders, past and present. And if there are other elders who are tuning in and watching and joining our meeting tonight, I acknowledge them as well. As per the emergency measures, being able to meet in a virtual sense, councillors, there are the requirements that we have, which is that we all must be able to hear each other, we all must be able to see each other, and we all must be able to be heard. And at any time, if the technology evades us and we can't see, hear, or be heard, I will postpone the meeting at that time and be able to get our technology back online. If any councillor needs a break at any time, also just signal me and we'll turn cameras off and adjourn for a small period of time if we need to do that. But we will start with a bit of a roll call and just see if everyone can be heard and can be seen and can hear as well. So I'll start with Deputy Mayor, councillor Alan McFarlane, can you see and hear me?
I can, thank you Mr Mayor, I can see everyone else.
Thank you. Councillor Darren Howe?
I can see and hear everybody, thank you.
We can see and hear you, thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Sharon Gibson?
See and hear, thanks Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Brad Law?
All very good, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Law. Councillor Daryl Harrington?
He can see and hear all councillors, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Daryl Watt?
Yes, can hear and see all councillors, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Watt. Councillor Graham Middlemas?
Yes, can see and hear all councillors, thank you.
And can see and hear you. And councillor Kelly O'Callaghan?
Thank you Mr Mayor, all clear.
Thank you very much, can see and hear you as well. Thank you very much councillor O'Callaghan. We are live streaming this council meeting this evening, and this will be seen on our YouTube channel and will be streamed as well on our Facebook through the YouTube link. It is against our local law for any recordings of the meetings, of these meetings, and if anyone does want to record the meeting, they need to seek permission through the chair. No one has done that, so no one will be recording this meeting apart from ourselves, which will be going to YouTube after this. A special welcome that I'd like to make this evening is to our youth council, who are joining us this evening. The youth council had a bit of a rough start to the year, and they were meant to meet early in the year, in March and April. They have come together now, finally done their induction process online, and they have been asked to attend our meeting, so they are all sitting at the comfort of their own lounge chairs at home and watching our meeting and watching the democratic process go through in local government. So next week, we will welcome the youth councillors into a virtual forum like this, and we'll be able to see what they thought of our process, but we would like to send them a quick shout out as they sit at home and watch us this evening. We move on to apologies for this evening, and as I can see, all nine councillors and our CEO, we are all here and present, so there are no apologies. Seek any declarations of interest in item four, if anyone has anything. Councillor Harrington?
Yes Mr Mayor, I've declared it before, item 16.1, consideration of submissions and endorsements of the 2021 Community Grants and Sponsorship Programme. I believe there was a subcommittee of Trogan Lions put in a submission, and that I have a role or had a role as Vice President and now have a role as President of Trogan Lions, so I'll declare an indirect interest, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Harrington for your indirect interest at 16.1. Any other councillors needing to clear? Councillor Callaghan?
Thank you Mr Mayor, declaring an interest for item 17.3, and the paperwork's already been provided to the offices.
Thank you for that. Any other councillors? Now, if there's anything that pops up through the debate or discussion or in the papers that you haven't cited before, you can just make it down at the time. For that, we move to item five, which is adoption of the previous minutes. These were the June 1st meeting that we had, a special ordinary meeting, and then our special council meeting on the 15th of June as well. Councillor Middlemas, so I moved, and councillor Gibson? Seconding?
Seconding.
Thank you very much. All right, councillor Middlemas? Councillor Gibson, seconding. Any opposition to that? Any councillor wish to speak to those minutes? We've just seen them as passed, thank you very much, councillors. We move to the section in our council meeting where we have acknowledgements. These, where a councillor, any councillor can raise a formal acknowledgement of a community member or someone or a group within our municipality that they'd like to acknowledge formally through the council meeting. Councillors, does anyone have an acknowledgement that they'd like to make this evening? Councillor Harrington?
Thank you Mr Mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge the President of the North Cusin Football League, David Kyle, and his board. Obviously, they have just made the tough decision not to run a seniors competition, and in the last week have made the decision not to run their junior competition. I'd just like to congratulate on the why they have conveyed that to the community, the way they've sought feedback from all the clubs involved in the competition, and the way they've taken into account the future of the organisation, but also the impact it could have on supporters and spectators, and in particular volunteers. There was rules that they could have adhered to to run the competition, but it would have put a lot of strain and stress on their volunteers. And I think the contemplation of the issues that might have faced those volunteers that they took was excellent, and they put the volunteers before a monetary position, and I think that's fantastic. And I think they need to be acknowledged for that very tough decision, but made with the best intentions of their volunteers and their clubs at heart. So I'd just like to acknowledge David and his full committee.
Thanks councillor Harrington. Any other councillors who wish to make an acknowledgement, formal acknowledgement? All right, thank you very much. We move to item seven on our agenda, which is public participation time. Councillors, as you would know, this comes in two forms. One is a written participation, where members of our community can write in to council and ask for a specific issue to be addressed. And the second is via video link or speaking to us in person, as it would be if we were all meeting in person, but that is an option that they can do by video link. This evening, I'll just ask the CEO, Mr Pearceente, are there any questions that have been sent in by writing?
No, no questions, I've noticed this evening, Mr Mayor.
Thanks Mr Pearceente. So we'll move to our speakers, where someone can come and speak to us. I see someone is joining us now. Simon Hemm? G'day Simon, great to have you here. We'll just test your audio if you can press the unmute button on your microphone.
How are you Mr Mayor?
I'm excellent, thanks Simon. We've noticed that we got sent around to our speakers, and you're the only one this evening. So you're the only person that's on our list to speak tonight. And this, I know this is not the first time you've spoken to council, but it is the first time that you've spoken in this way, via video. So the way that this will work, Simon, is you'll be addressing a particular item on the agenda. You've got three minutes to do so, and then councillors may have questions of you, so you can stay on the line and answer any further questions. And it's great to have you here, to present, to talk to us. So in your own time, we'll start the clock, and you've got three minutes to tell us.
Yeah, well, thank you Mr Mayor, for the opportunity to address council in support of the proposed resolution that council endorses the Latrobe Creative Precing Fundraising Subscription and Partnership Strategy for implementation. Sponsorship and fundraising is an important aspect for the ongoing support and success of the LCP, as it provides a sustainable method to supplement council funding to enhance community engagement and accessibility to the performing arts within the municipality. Extensive research has been undertaken by sports business partners who have presented a comprehensive roadmap, which proposes four-tier partnership packages with realistic pricing and associated benefits. The emphasis being on partnership, considered to be a more contemporary terminology than the term sponsorship, which for several decades has been used. Members of the project reference group and our wider network of supporters are extremely keen and ready to commit to the strategy, together with other recommendations, which include the establishment of Friends of LCP Group, the Buy a Seat campaign, possibly involuntary ratepayer contribution, and an annual subscription programme comprising packages consisting of a series of shows and the development of a premier series, potentially gift cards and the removal of venue and theme packages, as the focus should be on programming content. We're also extremely pleased to learn that application is being completed by council solicitor to apply for deductible gift register status, DGR, which of course means our ratepayers will be able to apply for a tax deduction should they make a donation. Mr Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Latrobe City, council, and its officers for its ongoing and unwavering support for the performing arts, along with representatives of the PRG, local arts community, and education sectors. What a marvellous site to see the construction workers on a daily basis, working with cranes and concrete trucks, providing a sweet symphony as our beautiful Performing Arts Centre rises up to take centre stage. Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thanks Mr Hemm. Councillors, are there any questions of Mr Simon Hemm? Councillor Watt?
Thank you Mr Mayor, thanks Simon for your presentation. One of the things you mentioned was the Friends of the LCP, and I just wanted whether you could elaborate a little more in terms of how you see the funds that are generated through this stream of activity will be managed. Do you see any views about that?
Yeah, thanks councillor Watt. I see the Friends of the LCP, I see it as being made up of perhaps a group of users of the LCP perhaps. We could liken that, say personally, to Latrobe Theatre Company, but certainly other user groups, or possibly whether they be people of a philanthropic nature, or perhaps even from our corporate sector, they, part of that could function within the Friends of LCP. It's probably a very broad terminology to use. We used to have a user group that was involved with the old Performing Arts Centre many years ago, and they would get together regularly and talk about issues within the centre. And I guess that's where that's coming from. But I see that as perhaps one of the key drivers for the actual programme, to support the partnership programme. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr Hemm? You must have done it quite eloquently then, Simon, thank you. Thanks, thanks for joining us this evening and speaking to that item on our agenda, which we'll be considering later in the evening. So thank you for coming to speak to us.
Thanks so much Mr Mayor, thank you councillors.
Thank you. Mr Hemm has now left the virtual room. We have no other speakers tonight in public participation time, there are no items held over. So we move to nine on our agenda, which is notices of motion. The first notice of motion is 9.1, In Globo Land Valuations. Councillor Harrington?
Moving, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this? Councillor Gibson is seconding this. Thank you. Any opposition? Councillor Harrington, did you wish to speak?
I will if I may, Mr Mayor, just to explain what this is about. Currently, we have sites within Latrobe City, they're called In Globo Land, which is basically land that had a different use, may have been farming, and in this case, we're looking at farming land that has now been, had a residential overlay put on it. It may not be being developed as residential land at the moment, it still could be getting farmed, but it's being rated at a higher value that it could be residential land. What we're asking with this notice of motion is that we go to the valuer general, who comes in and ascertains the value of all the land. It's not Latrobe City that does it. So we're asking the valuer general to look at that In Globo Land that had previously been farmland, and is still farmed. been farmland and is still farmed, and work out what its value would be if it didn't have that in Globo Land residential use put over the top of it. I have asked one ratepayer who's affected by this, if I could use their case without using their name. They had an in Globo Land encompassed their land 11 years ago. The land still isn't able to be developed. The stage before them still hasn't begun to be developed, and they've been paying rates as though the land had a residential value, even though it's a farm rate applied to it. So what I'm trying to find out with this notice of motion is what value it would be and how much the rating would be reduced, and also see that across the last 10 years if we can, so that we can actually come to what would be, I think, more expected from our ratepayers as a more realistic and more open rating of the land. So it's just to give councillors, ask for a report to come back, so that councillors can have that information, and we can actually look at it, because it's something as our towns continue to grow, that we're going to encompass more and more. And I just think it's important that we get on the front foot and have an idea about how we deal with in Globo Land, particularly when it's being farmed and continues to be farmed and can't be developed at this point in time. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Harrington. Councillor Gibson, you're the second. Would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'm happy to support this, because we're all about planning ahead. We have to have the right zones. So when a subdivision goes through, it's the right zone. So that's okay, but to do that, you have to plan ahead and change the zone. Now, by changing the zone, then you fall into the trap of what councillor Harrington was suggesting. So that's not fair, because just because we're doing the right thing by planning ahead shouldn't actually make the people who actually own the land at the time, they're at a disadvantage. So do we wish to plan ahead, which is what we should be doing? And then the actual landholder is going to be negatively impacted by large rates? Or no, it's okay? Not until the land is actually subdivided will they cop the different rates? I know this was a huge issue over here with the Lake Naricken precinct. And no, I'm happy to support this, because it's fair and it's right. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Gibson. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support this particular motion as well, and I concur with the remarks being made by two previous speakers. The dilemma of it all is that from the council's future vision point of view, we need to, as has been indicated by the other speakers, that we need to have been looking at, whether it's something like 10 or 20 years land supply or future residential development. And so the consequence of that is it has an impact on land next to the towns that exist within the municipality. And so the dilemma of it all is that land might not be actually ever used. It may be five, 10 years, 20, 15 years down the track before it is actually required for that purpose, depending on the rate of development. And so in the meantime, what's happened is that the land had a value as a farming enterprise, and now it has a value as a potential residential locality. So therefore, there's a huge impact in terms of the amount of rates that are detracts. And so there needs to be a fairer way to be able to be doing the right thing as a council in terms of the future of planning for the municipality. But on the other hand, but at the same time, we ought to be able to be a bit more appropriate in terms of the way that those particular property owners are dealt with in regard to their continuing of their aspirations of being farmers right next to the town. And we haven't gone right, I don't believe, at this stage, and this could be part of the solution. I think that there are other mechanisms that we should be contemplating as well. But I see this as a good start.
Thanks councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak for or against this notice of motion? Councillor Harrington, would you like to close?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor. I think councillor Gibson and councillor White have put it very eloquently. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our speakers, so we do need to put this to the vote. All those in favour, I'll raise your hand and I'll call your name out. Councillor Howe, councillor McFarlane, councillor Gibson, councillor Law, councillor Harrington, councillor White, councillor Middlemiss, councillor O'Callaghan and councillor Clancy, that's me, and we've passed that unanimously. Now that we've called that all out once, I'll probably just say unanimously in the event that we all have hands up in the future. But it's good to have a roll call there. Just waiting for councillor McFarlane to turn the light on. The timed lights sometimes turn off when they catch you out, councillor McFarlane. We're moving to 9.2 in notices of motion. Councillor Middlemiss, this is your notice of motion? Now you're live.
Whoops, thanks, Mr Mayor. I would like to move the motion as it is listed in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Councillor Harrington is the second. Thank you very much. I have a mover and a second. Now that is put. Councillor Howe?
I'd like to place an amendment on the notice of motion, if I could please, Mr Mayor.
Certainly can. So once the notice of motion has been put, any councillor can move an amendment. They must have a second as well, and then we must debate whether we will allow that amendment. So that's what we'll do at the moment. So councillor Howe, you're moving an amendment on the notice of motion. Councillor Gibson, I see your hand. I take that you're... Yep, it's not a question. You're seconding that. Thank you very much. So the mover and a second. Any opposition to the amendment? It's hard to know if there's opposition at the moment, because we haven't seen what the amendment is. But were you able to put that up at all? There it is. It's on the screen at the moment. I think this was circulated today. Mr Mayor? Perfect. Lay a couple of seconds to... Yeah, there it is. Thank you. Councillor Howe? What we're doing at the moment is having a discussion about whether we'll allow this as an amendment. So if you can just explain that to us, and then we'll need to vote on that before it becomes a substantive motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. What I'm basically doing is adding three more paths to councillor Middlemiss's notice of motion. What he's asked for is that we have a master plan of all our tracks and trails throughout Latrobe City. What I've asked to be included is that there's a track or trail from Yalorn North to Tyres, from Tyres to Trail to Tyres and from Tyres to Glen Gary. So what we effectively do is link up all our major, our four major towns or three major towns, and our smaller towns as well. So we'll have a full master plan of all our tracks and trails moving forward.
Thank you. Councillor Gibson, you're a second on this?
Yes, I am, Mr Mayor.
Do you wish to speak?
Just briefly, look, in the original motion, I was fully supportive of that, because it's linking all of our towns and the paths that are linking Moe and Moor are really great too, also up to Yalorn North, because that's been a gap. But this actually, there was three, as councillor Howe suggested, that we missed inadvertently. So I'm happy to move that that will be the case.
All right, thank you for the explanation. Thank you. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? As White should be allowed, councillor Middlemiss?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, not taking part in the debate at this point. Would it be possible for those at home to see the diagram, the schematic of the proposal, so that people at home could see actually what is being discussed at the moment?
Yeah, I wondered whether we were going to do that when we actually, that we allowed it. But did you want to do that now, did you?
No, no, not good. When it's too...
If this is allowed as an amendment, then that will be the item for discussion. I think at the moment, we're discussing whether we should allow this as an amendment. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Do I see a hand as to why this should be or shouldn't be allowed? Councillor White?
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I mean, like others have said already, I was happy to be supporting the original notice of motion, but I'm equally prepared to support the amendment to the notice of motion as well. And I suppose for me, it's... My reading of it is it tended to be, whatever you might call it, high level. And whilst there's been other particular stretches that have been identified, like for example, Yalorn to Tyres, et cetera, there's a couple of others that sort of really are other potential links that could be created as well. One is from the Anant path through to Churchill, and the other one that I'm thinking of is from Terrelegan, south back into Terrelegan. So what I'm really thinking, I'm looking at it in the context of this being, if you like, a high level sort of look at creating all these linkages within the municipality, so that we can be prepared for any opportunities that might come our way in terms of funding any particular stages of this overall master plan that might be agreed to by this council.
Thank you councillor White. Any other councillors wish to speak to this amendment, to allow it or to not allow it? Councillor Harrington?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just wanted to say I fully support this. I think what we're looking at, and I do congratulate councillor Middlemiss for coming up with the initial idea, and councillor Howe for adding these extra tracks in. It's going to provide the community some great loops throughout Latrobe City and beyond, and connect us in with other municipalities, and give those that want to come down and actually enjoy two, three, four days riding or walking through the Gippsland region, a great range of tracks, all interconnected, all working together. And no doubt it's going to be a huge boost, not only to the local economy, through the locals, using a range of tracks, being able to go from Glen Gary through to Yalorn North and back round through Moe and Moor, and back into Terrelegan, and off to Glen Gary again, or any of those tracks. But it's also going to bring in a lot of people to use the tracks going from Moe North all the way through to Stratford. I think it's a fantastic idea and fully support it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harrington. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to my colleagues' comments, very happy to support this. But from a different perspective in relation to our municipal public health and wellbeing plan, there's a body of work that's undertaken by our officers and a broad range of community stakeholders. And this is certainly something that is well-supported, reflected, and adds to the livability context in relation to health and wellbeing, not only for our small towns, but those members of our communities more broadly, across the municipality and across Gippsland, who look for opportunities to participate in activities that allow them to participate in our natural environment, but also take up the opportunity to visit some of our beautiful small towns, and also set off from our larger towns to explore other areas as well. So I commend my colleagues for bringing this to us for consideration. And also thank councillor Howe for giving consideration to some of those other areas being added to it. And I think councillor White rightly indicated there are some other opportunities that, once we look at this more fully, we may be able to expand in a broader context as well. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor O'Callaghan. Any other councillor wish to speak to the amendment before we have it put? If that's the way it is? No, councillor Howe, did you wish to close as to why this should be added?
I'm happy, Mr Mayor. I think there is, they said.
All right, then we'll put it to the vote then. Thank you very much, councillors. All those in favour of the amended? And that has gone through unanimously. I won't call out all the names, so thank you very much. Now, that becomes the new motion, that we've added that amendment to it. So councillor Howe, you are the mover of that new motion, and councillor Gibson, you are the second of that new motion, which we'll ask the officers to put up on the screen now, which is the one and two and three. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak to this?
Oh, just for Mr Mayor. Yeah, so that's the map that we've come up with. Firstly, I'd like to start by congratulating councillor Middlemiss on bringing the original notice of motion to council. I think it's a fantastic idea, and that's why I jumped on it. In recent years, these sort of tracks have become quite popular for people, walking, running, riding. People are now planning their leisure time around these paths. They do plan their weekends and holidays. They visit different areas of the country of Victoria for three, four days. They walk the paths they ride. So for us to be able to have a master plan of all our paths and trails moving in the future, will provide us with a template. And if funding definitely does come available, we can jump on it and act straight away. Back in February this year, we did endorse the GLGD initiative, the Gippsland Tracks and Trails Strategy. That was a master plan of tracks and trails all over Gippsland. So really, this is just bringing out our piece of Gippsland into the same sort of frame, where we'll have a master plan moving forward. And as councillor O'Callaghan says, it does tick off some boxes when it comes to our health and wellbeing plan, and it also does help with our tourism strategy. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe. Councillor Gibson, as a second, did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, I agree with what the other councillors have said. I'd like to congratulate councillor Middlemiss for his initiative with putting this forward in the first place. It is much needed, because they're right, the health and wellbeing of our community, if you have the tracks and the trails, so they can actually walk, ride, run safely, that's only going to help their health. Now, as much as the track or the shared path from Terrelegan to Moor is great, and that's happening now, there were gaps. There was a gap from Moor to Moe, Moe to, or Newborough and Moe, then a gap from Newborough to Yalorn North, which, if you ask Yalorn North community and the rail trail from over here, that's been a gap. But I won't say much on that. I'd suggest councillor Middlemiss may wish to speak on that a bit more. So there are gaps. But if we're doing this, it actually ties it all in. We all know that often the government will say to us, right, there's a bucket of money now, have you got something shovel-ready? So this is doing it so we can be shovel-ready for when, and we do get it all the time from the governments. Okay, what project is the bucket of money? So we're being on the front foot, which is a great thing to do, and we're ready. So we're linking up all of our community. Mind you, I take note what councillor White has said, that while there are some gaps, I can think of some over here, but I don't see it as an issue that they haven't been added in yet. They can be added in. So it's a higher-level document, and it's linking our community. We're supposed to be one community. So this just links it all in. So as I say, I congratulate councillor Middlemiss and councillor Howe for looking at the gaps and putting it forward. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Councillor Middlemiss? And then councillor White, thank you.
Mr Mayor, I should perhaps start... I should start with an apology to the good folk of Calligne, they're the last people not connected on this network proposal. But I drove around most of this area when I came up with the map, and I must admit I got tired just driving to Calligne. So I'm not sure that a bike path will work up to Calligne. But this proposal links, it's a far-fetched, well, not far-fetched, the wrong word, a futuristic proposal for what a linked city might look like. Great for the health and wellbeing of our people. And if you look at the proposal on the map before you, you'll see... And if you look at the, the proposal on the map before you, you'll see that to link Moi, Yalorn, Moor, Troggen on to Glengarry, Turn Gabby, and eventually all the way up to Stratford, there is only one missing piece. And that's from Yalorn into, into Moor. And there does exist a, a proposal for a track there, which would give us a cycling track to rival the great Victorian bike trail. I think we would have a better one than the one in the Gold Valley, much for attractive ones. So we're really not a long way off connecting it up now. If you then took the existing Murbin North into Balarra Trail and then the Balarra to Yanar section, which there is a community group out there well advanced with a proposal for that. All you need then is to connect Yanar into Moor and perhaps Churchill into Moor, just shown on the map. And we would have a superior, much superior trail to the great Victorian rail trails. So the tourism advantages are enormous and our proposal here is one advantage that every point on it is connected to another by public transport. You could drive from Melbourne, leave your, leave your car in Moi and, and ride to Stratford. Get on the train, come straight back to Moi, bus to Murbin North, same way. So it's quite a practical proposal, but we don't have the financial resources to do it, as councillors are aware of. But money is regularly offered by state and federal government. And if you look at item 15.2 in tonight's agenda, there's a $1.7 million offer. We could have connected the, across Moor and across Troggen parts of these paths with that money, but we didn't have the proposal. So what this is asking is for the officers to prepare a study on what such a preparation of such a study would look like, cost to council, all those kinds of efforts. And next month, we will get the opportunity to actually adopt a strategy around a network bike path. But given it seeks external funding, it's our proposal. I struggle to find anything wrong with this at all. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Middlemiss. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Councillor White, if you've indicated?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to build on that, which has been said so far, the, you know, I say that the the Yanar District Community Association, in particular with the tenacious relentless efforts of MacRae and Matt Ryan from out that way, have been able to attract the funding at this stage to be able to develop a plan for the link between Balarra and Yanar. And obviously in terms of the longer term vision with this, it is, the grand plan is to try and find a way into Moor as well ultimately. And, but I think that the overall concept is one, yeah, one of the things we've always often talked about in the past is being wanting to be known as the Network City and this would really sort of build on that theme. And of course, in relation to the pathway into Churchill, I think that it would be a great boost for the Churchill community. And in particular, the fact that Bathurst Park exists there, a regional park. And then of course, just the other pass through past Churchill, of course, is the Moor National Park as well, which, you know, is another great hidden treasure that we have within our municipality that would have enhanced, you know, participation, I'm sure, if the bike paths were established. And so I think that, as others have indicated, I, I support the comments that have been made in relation to the, the Councillor Middlemiss for bringing this matter forward. And, and I think that this is a, a very worthy project that, that really does need to be explored fully. And the potential of, as you said earlier, with, because Councillor Middlemiss said earlier in relation to tourism, that, that can, can you imagine, you know, if we had a bike path from Murbin North right through to Stratford, that would be fantastic from a tourism point of view.
Thank you, Councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak for or against this? Councillor Howe, would you, do you wish to close?
No, no, thanks, Mr Mayor. It is being said, I think.
All right, thanks very much, Councillor Howe. We have had speakers, so we do need to put this to the vote. We're voting on Councillor Howe's amendment. All those in favour? That is unanimous. I can see all hands. Thank you, councillors. Thank you very much. That is passed unanimously. But thank you very much for working that through. We're moving over to 14.1. There's nothing at 10, 11, 12 or 13. We move to 14. 14.1 is the authorisation to proceed the planning scheme amendment for the Turn Gabby structure plan. Do I have a mover? Councillor O'Callaghan moving. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Howe seconding. Any opposition? No opposition. Councillor O'Callaghan, did you wish to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Turn Gabby structure plan has been broadly consulted with the local community in Turn Gabby in district. But it's also been available to the broader Latrobe City community to provide some information. And there have been people from outside of the immediate town who participated in some of their forums as well. Our planning officers are to be commended for the work they've undertaken in relation to this consultation process and to bring this information together so that we can look to the endorsement and subsequent public exhibition in terms of the planning scheme amendment. What it does do is give consideration to how planning can proceed within Turn Gabby. It gives you consideration to concerns that the community have raised with us, but it also reflects on current usage patterns of the township itself, the broader community of Turn Gabby and its catchment. But also how to maintain the regional perspective, regional and rural perspective that exists in our beautiful small towns, of which Turn Gabby is one. So it gives great consideration not only to just where blocks are, where new development could potentially be, but how we use the land we already have, what infill development may look like and how that's used. And everything right across road usage, types of roads, streets, drains, walking paths and a broad range of other things. So so there were two particular forums that were held for community members to participate in. And some of our planners took it upon themselves to directly engage in some innovative, new and creative ways with our community members. And I thank them for taking new and different approaches to this engagement, but also being quite proactive in their outreach to community to ensure that everybody's had the opportunity to speak to the planning scheme opportunity that this creates for us. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor O'Callaghan. Councillor Howe, as a seconder, did you wish to speak to this?
Just briefly, Mr Mayor. Also, congratulations to our planning department. This was a massive amount of work. It was all done in-house, without consultants or anybody engaged for this, so well done. When they set about doing this, they, they had eight main objectives in mind. It was to maintain the historical, cultural and environmental values of Turn Gabby, to retain the quiet rural atmosphere, to promote the tourism assets, to improve the infrastructure within the town, to retain the larger block sizes, to support the rural residential allotments on the outskirts of town, to support the community groups and associated infrastructures and to protect the productive agricultural land from further subdivision. I think it ticks all those boxes. They did, it did do extensive community engagement, which our councillor O'Callaghan has already touched on. It fits in well with our little work programme. And I just think it's the result of the well organised and laid out structure plan. So full support, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Howe. Any other councillors wish to speak to this, either for or against? Councillor O'Callaghan, did you wish to close the debate?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to congratulate, as my councillor colleague has also mentioned, Jodie Redden and the planning team for being very creative and open. And as Councillor Howe also mentioned, being able to undertake this work in-house. It was a significant body of work and a commitment made by our team to ensure that we had our, our local team and our local people engaging directly with our local community. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor O'Callaghan. We have had speakers, councillor. We do need to put this to the vote with a show of hands. All those in favour? I can see nine hands, so that is carried unanimously. Thanks very much for that, councillors, showing hands. We move on to 14.2, which is Latrobe Creative Precinct Fundraising, Subscription and Partnership Strategy. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor Harrington? Councillor McFarlane seconding? Thank you. Is there any opposition? No opposition indicated. Councillor Harrington, did you wish to speak?
If I may, Mr Mayor, I just, I just want to thank a couple of people that have been a, a big part of coming up with the fundraising subscription and partnership strategy. I think the officers and the work they've done with, with the consultant has been absolutely brilliant. I think they've, they've really listened to the PRG and I'd like to thank all members of the PRG as well, of which Simon Heading, who spoke earlier, is, is a member and spoke, spoke on behalf of. Their time they've taken, the input they've put into this, the thought and the knowledge they've brought to the consultants and to the officers has been absolutely outstanding. And the compilation work done by the officers and within conjunction with the consultant to come up with some new ideas, to listen to the PRG and to work it together and then workshop this and debate it with councillors, with the PRG, has been absolutely fantastic. I think it's a, a model moving forward that could be used in a lot of council, council projects. It's bringing together what is going to be a fantastic result. And I think it's giving us a strong future that we can engage with the community, we can engage with local businesses and fully support and, and get some extra funding organised for the, the creative arts precinct moving forward. So again, I'd just like to thank the members of the PRG for their input and the officers and the consultants for the work they've done. And also the, the chair of the PRG, who happens to be sitting in the main chair tonight as well. So I just think they've all done a fantastic job and kudos to you, Mr Mayor, that the work you've done on the PRG's been fantastic. So thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Harrington. Councillor McFarlane, you were the seconder?
Oh, briefly, Mr Mayor and Councillor Harrington, I think, said it all. This is a process that's taken some time to get to its point. And through that process, as Councillor Harrington says, there's been consultation with, within our own staff, with the council, with the project reference group and, and even some consultation with the community through different, different groups. So I believe it's, it's an all encompassing process that's also done some benchmarking with other municipalities and local facilities. So it gives us some confidence in knowing that, that we, we're looking at a state of the art process here with our fundraising, subscription and partnerships to match the state of the art facility that we will be looking at this time next year. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, Councillor McFarlane. Any other councillors wish to speak either for or against this at 14.2? Councillor White?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support the, and endorse the, the, the strategy that's been identified here. I think that the opportunity this affords our community and particularly, well, at all levels, you know, from an individual through to corporations, the opportunity to get on board with this major development within our municipality and to be, if you like, to be part owners in a way through the sponsorship or, and partnerships. That this is really going to enhance the, you know, the support for and commitment to this particular new facility that's going to have a, like a huge difference so far as this aspect of, of our, for our people, you know, in terms of, of entertainment and also opportunities for personal growth and development and for individuals to be able to pursue their dreams in the, in the arts. Yeah, the, the whole package is what it's all about. And, and I think that this particular strategy is one that's going to help really create those synergies and that, that will further enhance the, the outcomes that are going to be achieved by the LCP going forward.
Thank you, Councillor White. Any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Harrington, would you like to close?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have had speakers, so we do need to put this to the vote. All those in favour? There's nine hands. Thank you very much, all councillors. That has gone through unanimously. Thank you very much. Move to item 14.3, which is a waiver and refund of planning fees policy. Do I have a mover? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Howe as the seconder? I got that right? Yep. Thank you. Any opposition? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to this?
Just briefly, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, we're very supportive when our community groups wish to do projects on our, basically our property. But often, and as much as they have to do it properly, which is with planning permits, et cetera, then that entails fees. So this is all about removing the financial barrier that they experience for any, whether it be a community group or a sporting group. So they can actually use those funds to actually do the project. So it's a very simple policy, but a very much needed policy. So happy to move.
Thanks, Councillor Gibson. Councillor Howe?
Oh, thanks, Mr Mayor. Just briefly, there's, there's probably three parts to this motion. The first one is what Councillor Gibson was talking about, just updating the policy, the policy that we passed back in 2017 to bring it more in line with what our original intentions were. The second part of this motion is the current rebate and refund policy in response to the COVID-19 problem. This was passed at a special council meeting on June 15th. This is part of the business community and special sort of support recovery package. And the final part of this is to combine two policies that we currently have. We currently have the, the waiver of planning permit application fee policy and the fees and charges we make and waiver, waiver policy. But as well, this is the one policy to make it a little bit easier and streamline things a bit better. So that's all at this stage, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Howe. Do any other councillor wish to speak to this, either for or against? Councillor Gibson, back to you as the mover? Do I wish to close? All right, we have had speakers, so we do need to put this to the vote. All those in favour? Yes, thank you very much. I can see you all. Thank you. That is passed unanimously. 14.4 is the next item on the agenda. Note to you, Councillor Gibson, thank you. This is the authorisation to proceed with the planning scheme amendment to facilitate the proposed upgrade and expansion of Gippsland Waters Moi Water Treatment Plant. Councillor Gibson, you are moving?
Yes, please.
Councillor Law, you are seconding? Thank you. Any opposition to this? Opposition registered. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, the residents over here who live in Moi, Newborough, Yalorn North area, they will all tell you about an event that occurred recently, a few months ago, which we had no water. Or, well, we did have water, but we had to boil it for a period of time, not just a day or two either, it was a couple of weeks. And what we're trying to do now is authorise the planning scheme amendment for Gippsland Waters so they can actually put a second basin in. So then when there's a hiccup like there was, I think it was back in February, there's no issue. We're not going to go offline at all. So this is what this is all about. And again, it's preparing for the future. We can't have any expansion with the, the water with residents. And of course, then they're going to have their water connected. But if you don't have the infrastructure, well, you can't have any of your subdivisions. So I, I'm more than happy for this to occur. So I'm more than happy for this to occur. And I'm more than happy that that will mean that we won't be boiling water for a period of weeks. So happy to support this. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. councillor Law, you are the second. Do you wish to speak?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Yeah, just quickly to follow on, it is purely a it's not an idea, it's a must that this happened just to create security for our water supply for the Moi and surrounding towns and region. Because at this point in time, we're just about to reach capacity. And we just need to future proof all our future developments. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Law. Any other councillor wish to speak either for or against this resolution? councillor Gibson, did you wish to close? Not taking the opportunity to close. Then we will put it to the vote. We've had two speakers. All those in favour? Can see everyone. Yes, that has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We are moving to 14.5 Latrobe City submissions to the senate inquiry. councillor O'Callaghan, I note you, you're moving? Yes, thank you. Do I have a second? councillor McFarlane, thank you. Any opposition to this? No opposition registered. councillor O'Callaghan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is two of the senate inquiry submissions that council will be presenting. The senate often gives the opportunity for municipalities to provide formal submissions in relation to particular events or circumstances, and this is no different. So this is a senate inquiry into the response in relation to the COVID-19 pandemic and also the responses in relation to the Australian bushfire season 2019-20. Council felt it was important to be able to amplify the voice of our community through its elected representatives and provide some context to the lived experience of our community. Clearly, in relation to COVID-19, this is an ongoing concern and impact for communities. And it is one that it's likely to extend for a much greater period of time than the body of this actual work for the senate. But what it does do is give us the opportunity to provide a point in time response in regard to the way this was initially handled and responded to in a federal context. And also provide some understanding of what the impact is, particularly for our local community, for the people of Latrobe, but also for businesses and the impact in relation to economic considerations. But also more broadly, just what that means in terms of a regional and rural perspective across the municipality. We know in relation to COVID-19, there are significant health and wellbeing impacts that are not just related to COVID itself, but also to those who are living with other chronic diseases who now have some difficulty in terms of accessing services and support. And we also know there's been some significant changes to the way people go about interacting with health services. And that in itself could cause a significant risk to people living in our community in the longer run. So there's been a great deal of work undertaken by our team. I commend Gail Gat and her team for all of the work they've undertaken and the information they've brought together to support us, to further amplify that community voice. And I also thank those community members, particularly from our bushfire affected communities, who shared so generously with us, particularly during previous fire seasons, but also the most recent one, about their lived experiences, the concerns they have around response and how we can do that better because there's always going to be room for improvement. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm very happy to recommend both of these senate inquiry submissions for consideration by council.
Thanks councillor O'Callaghan. councillor McFarlane, you were the second, you're on.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor O'Callaghan has said it all.
Thank you councillor McFarlane. Does any other councillor wish to speak to this either for or against? councillor O'Callaghan, would you like to close?
Nothing further, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillors, we'll put this to the vote. All those in favour? 14.5. See, all nine hands. Thank you very, very much. That's very clear. But we're moving across to 15.1, which is the black spot funding for Balarumubu North Road. councillor White, I note you. councillor How, you're seconding? Thank you. All right. Any opposition to this councillors? councillor White?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As with everyone else, just briefly. The Black Spot Funding Programme is an ongoing road safety programme committed to reducing the risk and severity of crashes in particular areas. And as mentioned in our council report, the road safety partnership has been established with Regional Road Victoria to review crash history within Latrobe City. And as a result, RIRP, Regional Road Victoria, requested submissions for funding under 2020-2021 infrastructure investment Black Spot Programme. The review identified this particular stretch of road, the Balarumubu North Road, as a potential project because of over a five year period in December 2018. There were two serious injury crashes and two other injury crashes as well. And so in association with that, there's been, it's proposed to make some, have a submission for 145,000, which also takes into account consideration of reducing the speed limit along that section of road as well, Mr Mayor. And from 100 down to 80K, you probably can't do 100 on the road anyway. But to get it down to 80 and to, so that it makes more realistic in terms of the speed limit that it ought to be in that or utilised for that particular locality. And I think that in those circumstances, Mr Mayor, this is a very worthy project. That's very much worthy of support by this council.
Thanks councillor White. councillor How, second?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. Just briefly. We are looking at exploring the east of the Classtville Chevron alignment on at least one corner. This is due to the high use of motorcycles to use this road. These Classtville Chevrons will go to the attention to the council or the members of the Gibson Motorcycle Advisory Group that made it us ago. So it's good that we have taken that on board and have seen possible use for it. And also this does tie in with our road safety strategy, which also aligns with the state and federal strategy of having safer roads, safer vehicles, safer drivers and safer speeds. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor How. Are there any other councillors wish to speak to this 15.1, the Black Spot Funding Project? All silent. councillor White is the mover. You have an opportunity to close.
I think it's all been said now that councillor How has said all that I didn't say.
All right, thank you very much councillors. We will put this to the vote now. All those in favour of this? And I can see all nine hands that has passed unanimously. So thank you very much. We move to 15.2, which is the federal government local roads and community infrastructure stimulus programme. The proposed project list. councillor Gibson, I note you. Then councillor Middlemiss, I see you as well. Are you moving councillor Gibson or question?
I'd like to move an alt please that should be available.
councillor Middlemiss, is that what you're indicating? Sorry.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. I anticipated this one would be required moving and then councillor Gibson would move an amendment as in the previous item. So I was just trying to facilitate the process, but either way, I'm quite happy to be the second for the alt.
Yeah, all right. Thank you very much. At 15.2. All right, thank you councillor Gibson. You've got an alt there. It's on the screen. I think there's an opportunity, this went around via email early on as well. So people have had an opportunity to see this. They have a mover in this alt in councillor Middlemiss. councillor Gibson?
I think councillor Gibson, the mover, I was the seconder, I think.
Yes, that's right. Yep. councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak to this?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. And there was a tad bit of confusion because at first it was going to be an amendment, but that got sorted out just before we started. So apologise to councillor Middlemiss. Look, I'm more than happy to move this alt as has been said often, that the government comes and says, right, we've got money for you. Go and spend it on whatever that is actually already got plans now. We have got that, but there was one that we missed out on for many different reasons that I have spoken or sent in the email to the councils about. And we forgot about the street light for Lake Narican. So this alt is actually just putting that in because we already had surplus funds. So there's still a bit of surplus funds. So it was just adding that into the original. Now, the original is all about endorsing a list of different projects with the $1.7 million that the Australian government is giving us for local roads and community infrastructure programmes. Now, I'm delighted, besides the Lake Narican one, which is really needed for safety. Anyone who is local knows some of the issues that go down there. And look, I won't speak to all the different ones for the different wards in case any of the other councillors wish to speak to the projects for their wards. But I will say, some of the projects over here that I'm delighted are on the list is Savages Road footpath. As everybody knows, that we had a petition and we had the people from Savages Road area come in and speak to us and their real concerns about especially disabled people being able to walk along there to get from the new estate into the shopping centre. And it is quite dangerous. So that's great that this is now on the list to be completed. The Colville Road Moi one, that's another one that we've had where, and that's a wheelchair person who desperately needs this footpath. So I'm delighted about that. Although I will just touch briefly, but councillor Middlemiss, I suggest we'll touch a lot more on this, is the Toners Lane water supply. I'm delighted this is in there. Then we also have Ted Summerton, the netball court to be resurfaced. Then all our netball within Moi New Borough should be sorted. We have the...
Time, three minutes?
Sorry.
Okay, you're done?
Sorry.
There is no bell, so I was just letting you know that the three minutes was, just in case you wanted to wrap up.
Look, if maybe...
I think you might have one there if you want one.
Oh, just a little bit. That's possible.
councillor O'Callaghan's moving an extension of an additional three minutes. And councillor How gave you a wave as well for a second. All those in favour of councillor Gibson, another three minutes? Thank you. That's unanimous. You've got another three minutes councillor Gibson. Sorry, there is no bell to warn you of that.
Oh, that's all right because no worries. Look, as I was saying, that cleans up all the netball courts in the Moi New Borough area by this. So that's a great project. And these are all little projects that have been needed for so long. Now, the one that I added in was a light, a street light down at Lake Narican. Now sadly, there is some behaviour that when you shine the light of day or the light of the street light on, it tends to disappear. And especially down there because it is quite an area that unless you're down there, it's isolated. So it can be quite dangerous. So we're putting light down there. So we have a great facility down there. We have a great caravan park. We've got the jetty and everything. But this will actually make it much safer. So I'm delighted to put that in. And I won't speak to all the others because I'll let the other councillors speak to their ward ones. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson. councillor Middlemiss, you were the second in this one?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. This is federal government money, $1.7 million, which has been given to us to stimulate the economy during the COVID downturn. And I'm sure we're all grateful for the Commonwealth for giving that money. Councils always have a long list of projects which they'd like to implement, but they don't have the money for and these sit on a waiting list often for four or five, six, seven years. What we've been able to do is pick up quite a number of smaller projects and use this money to bring them forward, which is great for our community. I won't go into the particular ones in my ward in case I jinx them because I noticed it still has to be approved by the Commonwealth Government. But look, this is a welcome addition to our economy. It's relatively small tradie stuff, I'll call it that, which is good for the economy, good for the local workers etcetera. So this is nothing but a win-win for us and I totally support it. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Middlemiss. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? councillor McFarlane?
Just a point of clarification, Mr Mayor, and I certainly support the motion. But if we do look in the agenda, there are two lists. The first list totals somewhere near the $1.7 million, which we still have to go through the formal approval process. And then there's the supplementary list. And councillor Gibson, you did make mention of the Ted Summerton Reserve in Paul Courts, which actually sits on the supplementary list. So I just wouldn't like patrons of that facility to think that they've got their court resurfsing. That's something that may or may not come as the second step. Thank you.
Thanks very much. councillor McFarlane, is there any other councillor who wish to speak to this? councillor White?
Mr Mayor, just to, I think this has been done to test me, but just on page 199, the third last line, if you like, if you're the last, talked about Comyn's Road. I think we really meant to say Comyn Street in Morel, just to be dashing about it. We need to get that right, I think, Mr Mayor.
Comyn Street in Morel? Mr Pierce, can you just check that? Is that, is that Comyn's? That's not? Comyn's Lane or Comyn's Road or, okay, it's Comyn Street.
And I've taken notice just now. I'll take one of the general managers can look that up and get back to you.
Yep. I think I'm getting some nods from councillors who grew up in Morel. So I think that they're on top of that one. But yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, Comyn's, Comyn Street is is the sixth one down on page 199. Thanks councillor White. We'll adjust that. Any other councillor wish to speak to this either for or against? councillor Gibson, you're the mover? You wish to close?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you councillor McFarlane. Yes, you're right. That is the supplementary list. So I apologise. Hopefully we can, but it is a supplementary list and there are different projects on that. Look, I just, councillor Middlemiss was right. This is a bucket of money from the federal government that we have all these small projects. So we have bundled them up and a lot of them are about safety. So I'm delighted that we have been given this opportunity and can just recommend the projects. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much councillor Gibson. We've had speakers councillors, so we need to put this to the vote at 15.2. All those in favour? Yes, I can see everyone. Everyone's in favour. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. Yes, I can see everyone. Everyone's in favour. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. We are moving over to 16.1. And before we do, councillor Harriman, I'll just adjure you from the room if you want me to.
Thank you very kindly, Mr Mayor. That would be great.
Just missed. And we'll have the officers contact councillor Harriman on his turn. So we are moving to 16.1, the consideration of submissions and endorsements. Did I see a wave there councillor McFarlane? Do I see? Yes. Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Law, thank you very much. Councillor McFarlane, councillor Law. Councillor Middlemiss, do you want me to just mute you just in case? Thank you. Any opposition to this councillors? 16.1? Councillor McFarlane, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This this report follows on from an earlier report that the council discussed in May, where all of our community grants and sponsorship process has been reviewed significantly over the past six months or so, in an effort to streamline and consolidate the various and many grants that the council become involved in. This process went through the council meeting on the 4th of May, where we agreed to circulate out for community comment. And this report now really is about that comment. And it was pleasing to know that broadly, there was an overwhelming support for the new draft guidelines. There's been a little bit of tweaking along the way. And as we said, when this this report was first put to the council in May, it's been quite a long, big process. And ultimately, there may need to be a bit of tweaking. But it was suggested, and I think we all agreed at the 4th of May meeting, that we need to get the show on the road once we've had the community have a look at it and give us their feedback. So we're at that point now. And assuredly, then, once we get past the first year, we will do a review to see if there's been any hiccups, given the significant changes that have occurred along the way. But certainly, I'm certainly pleased with with the sponsorship programmes and their framework. And we're now in a position, I believe, to go out to the community and get some of these programmes starting to roll. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much councillor McFarlane. Councillor Law, you with the second up?
Alan's basically said it all, Mr Mayor, but it's clearly just a requirement of our processes around the grants. And it's just trying to bring everything back into alignment and make the process easier for both the community and also our staff. So that we get that we get a better process in place. So we're we're being more transparent and the people from the various clubs have better access to funding on a more regular basis. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Law. Any other councillor wish to speak to this 16.1? Councillor White?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I am happy to support the resolution that's proposed here in the sitting on this particular item. And certainly, as has been indicated, it is quite, there has been quite a significant review undertaken here. And I think that there may be some rough and anticipated edges that might pop up as a consequence of the review process we've been through. And but and so I think what's important here is that we make sure that our community understands that this is about being more flexible, about being more transparent, if you like, and also creating a framework within which the broad range of our community volunteers can can be supported in their endeavours to add to the the social strengthening of our community, whether it's whichever stream of recreational pursuits or other pursuits that might be being undertaken within the municipality. And I think that what I'm concerned to and want to be want to make it clear that that so far as the future is concerned, this will be subject to review going forward to make sure that if there are any diamonds within it or edges within it, that we are to be prepared to be a good listeners so far as trying to understand the implications. But I think that, as has been indicated by councillor McFarlane, that there's about trying to come up with a more streamlined process that is not only beneficial to the volunteers out there in our community, but also is able to be better administered, if you like, and more functional from the administration's point of view, in terms of being able to oversee the whole sponsorship and grants programme, the extensive one that it is that this council does provide to our community in support of our community, who who those particular volunteers out there in that community, who are really the strength and social fabric that really makes this municipality tick. So I just want to be clear about that, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor White. Thank you very much. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Now, the speakers, councillor McFarlane is the mover. You get a chance to close.
All been said, Mr Mayor.
All been said. Thank you very much. Then we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. It's a clear sight of all hands up. Thank you very much. That has passed unanimously. Mike, the officers to contact councillor Harriman and see if he can join the meeting again. As we move over to item 16.2.
Send councillor on a message. I'm sure somebody else has as well.
Okay, I'm sure he'll jump back in a second. Here he comes. Councillor Harriman is back.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor, thank you. All right, everyone's back in. Thank you very much. We're moving over to 16.2, which is the Trelgden Central Business District Safety Committee. Have a mover, councillor Howe moving? Councillor Harriman seconding. Are there any opposition to this councillors? No opposition. Councillor Howe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First, I'll just start by explaining why this committee was established. It was created to create safe and secure environment to all Trelgden CBD users, to improve the perception of a safe environment to the central district business in Trelgden. It's to reduce any social behaviour and street crime within the identified hotspots. It's to promote the responsibility of alcohol in the hospitality industry in the CBD, to develop a safe movement and dispersal method to support late night users of the CBD, and encourage the use and support of the proper prevention and to reward member design principles. What it basically does is is our record regulation controls what happens inside the venues, we try and look up towards outside the venues. The basic change is that we have asked for is to move the frequency of the meetings to from monthly to quarterly. Bear in mind that if something arises that we need to meet more often, that we can ramp them up again. Take action to ensure gender equal representation. We've increased the members to have a broader input from the CBD businesses. We've had a wider age spread in our community representatives. We've dropped off a couple of members that are no longer relevant to the committee. And we'll be extending invitations to what I've moved to the such organisations as the Trelgden Post Office and some of the private schools around the town. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much councillor. Councillor Harriman, you're the second up?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to endorse the comments councillor Howe made and and thank the members of this committee. This committee's been going for over 10 years now. It originally started when we had huge problems, particularly in the K Street area and through Franklin Street, particularly with late night activity. This committee came on board, very supportive of the council, worked very well with the council and come up with some great ideas, including pushing for the CCTV that is now established right through the CBD of Trelgden. There were massive problems before this committee came on board. And through its work, it's it has made the CBD a lot safer and has also made it a lot more attractive to people at night. So I'd just like to thank those committee members that have been on board and endorse what councillor House says. If, you know, we're going after three months, because it's the conditions are so much better than where they were when this committee started. But if need be, this committee can be recalled as needed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks very much councillor Harriman. Any other speakers either for or against? This? None? Councillor Howe, did you want to close?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
All right, thank you. We will put it to the vote of who the councillors. So all those in favour, please show of hands. Now, I've got you councillor Middlemiss. Thank you. It's good. I saw everyone. Thank you very much. That is unanimous. Thanks very much for your show of hands there councillors. We move to 16.3, which is the Community Safety Infrastructure Grants. Councillor Gibson, no to. Moving? And councillor Law, I see you as well seconding? Thank you. Any opposition to this? No opposition registered. Councillor Gibson as the mover, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. As was noted earlier in the agenda, we had some money given to us by the federal government because of Covid. Now we're getting some money from the state government because of Covid. So we're delighted in that. Now, and again, this is all about safety infrastructure. So in the past, we have done infrastructure upgrades with different sites around our municipality. And this time, we're only allowed one application per organisation. So what we've done is bundled the three that were in Moei together as one, because you can do that. And it's addressing what's needed with the for safety. Now, the three that are combined is the Moei Rail Trail, the 1.6 kilometre of lighting. Now, for both of us, councillor Laura and myself, on the rail trail, we do have incidents with, again, unsightly behaviour, if that's the nicest way to put it, which is sad. But this is a great link that people use so often to get from Moei to Newborough. And for those who wish to go a bit further, they go out to the power station. But the lighting is from the beginning, which is Narican Creek, and it goes right through to Old Sail Road. Now, a lot of the the youth actually use that to go out to Luana. So yes, they don't need lighting to go to school, but they actually do use this anyway. It's not just them. And especially during the lockdown period of time, people have been using this section of the the trail and beyond so much more. So it's all about safety. Now, the other one is the Botanical Gardens. There's lighting there. And again, if you light it up, the chances of the people who are doing behaviour that really is not in the best interest of the whole community, they go. So again, there's lighting at Moei Botanical Gardens, which has just got the new the playground that the Moei Roadtree have done and the Moei Apex Park, again, solar lighting. And both of them have just got new playgrounds, which the the young ones and the parents are loving. So it's all about safety. And I I recommend or ask if my fellow councillors would support this. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Gibson. Councillor Law, you with the second up?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Councillor Gibson's covered all the projects that need that have been scoped out and fit for requirement for this funding. So yeah, no, I endorse what you, councillor Gibson, said to our fellow councillors and think that it's good that as a community, we're able to access some funding to help secure the benefits for the safety of our community while they're walking around enjoying our towns. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Law. Any other councillor wish to speak to this? Councillor Middlemiss? I'll do a mark for you. There you go.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. During the discussion of the appropriateness of these projects, there were some reservations raised about putting lighting on a rail trail. And most people associate rail trails with open paddocks, bushland, out in the open spaces. But this section, this section that is to be lit, is relatively an urban area, which has a lot more urban traffic on it, rather than the fitness people, as it's a shortcut between the two towns for for some people. And it is used just for normal pedestrian traffic. So whilst it's called a rail trail, it is in reality a footpath within the urban area of Moei Newborough. Thanks.
Thanks very much council members. Any other councillor wish to speak in for or against this 16.3? Anyone else? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to close? All right. We will put it to the vote, however. Councillors, all those in favour, show of hands, please. Yes, thank you. There's all nine hands. That has passed unanimously. So thank you very much. We move to 17.1, which is the release of the governance rules, including the election period policy and the draft of local law for public consultation. Do I have a mover? Councillor McFarlane is moving. Councillor Gibson seconding. Thank you. Moving. Councillor Gibson seconding. Any opposition to this? No opposition registered. Councillor McFarlane, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This process is to align us with the new Local Government Act 2020, which requires us to have government governance rules, election period policy, etc. And whilst we currently have all of those things in place in other forms, those those forms needed to be updated to take into account the changes that are made in the Local Government Act. And it tells us really how we will operate and how we will conduct our business as a council. So this process adopts initially the process, circulates for community consultation. And then, once that consultation period is over, we will go through a process to hear any any comments. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Just quickly, Mr Mayor, what councillor McFarlane's saying is right. This is to put us in line with the new Local Government Act. And there are different regulations that we have to to address. So if people wish to have a look, it's going out for the public to have their say, have a look. And if they've got some concerns or and if they've got some concerns or whatever, to write into us or put a submission in, thank you.
Thank you very much, are there any other councillor that wishes to speak to this motion, for or against? No, no one's raising hands, councillor McFarlane, did you wish to close?
Oh, briefly, Mr Mayor, as, as been said, this is a process to give the community an opportunity to comment, given the tight timeframes and we have to be absolutely ready to go on the first of September. The documentation is available to the public for a month only, commencing tomorrow and closing on the fourth of August, so that will give us time to consider those issues so that we can have these rules and local laws, et cetera, in place for the first of September.
Thanks councillor McFarlane. We need to put this to the vote councillors, so all those in favour. Yes, all hands are in the screen now, thank you very much for working your, working your cameras like that, thank you very much. We move to seventeen point two, which is the consideration of draft public transparency policy for public consultation. Councillor Gibson, I'm noting you, I have a second up. Councillor Howe, sorry councillor Harriman, picture post. Councillor Gibson and councillor Howe as the seconders, is there any opposition to this? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, I would, thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, again, this is putting our policy, our draft policy out for public consultation and the public can have a look at it, view it, make comments, put a submission in because it's all about our transparency to them. They are our ratepayers, they are effectively our boss. So this is how we inform them about what is actually going on behind the scenes and it's very important that if they're not happy about transparency, have a look at the document and have their say, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Howe, could you wish to speak to this?
No, no, thanks Mr Mayor.
Thank you, any other councillor wish to speak to this either for or against? No, councillor Gibson, did you wish to close?
Just quickly, Mr Mayor, look, I would really encourage the, the community to have a look at this because this is important. Often we get criticised rightly or wrongly about we're not transparent enough. Oh, that's a bit of a sore point with me from last council meeting, but this is, this is about the community having their say. So I would encourage them to have a look and have their say, thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson, we did put this to the vote now councillors, all those in favour. Working out left and right, thank you very much, I can see all nine hands, thank you very much, has moved through unanimously. We'll move to seventeen point three. Before we move to that, would you like me to dismiss you councillor Calligan? I will do the dismissing. And we'll contact councillor Calligan on return. Seventeen point three, the potential exchange of land, the Alavala Estate Eastern Extension into Trelrogan East, do I have a mover for this? Councillor Howe, councillor Harriman, I'll take you as the second up, this came up at the same time. Councillor Howe, can I end opposition? No opposition registered, councillor Howe, did you wish to speak to this?
Oh, just briefly, thanks, Mr Mayor, what this effectively is doing is we're swapping two parcels of land with the developer of the, Alavala East Development, developers. What it will give us two access points into the estate and in the land we give them will become a trade and sharing for the, for the development. So it's pretty much swap life for life and a win-win for both sides, thanks Mr Mayor.
Thanks councillor Howe, councillor Harriman.
No, I think councillor Howe said it all, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Harriman, any other councillor wish to speak either for or against councillor Middlemiss? Stand by. You're right.
Thanks, Mr Mayor, I should just make an observation whilst I can see the logic of this proposal and I, the more importantly, I accept the logic. I have been heard to mutter that councillors exchanging some quite good land for a swap. I'm not sure we're getting the best, the best deal out of this, but I can see the logic and support the logic of what's going on.
Thanks councillor Middlemiss, very much, any other councillor wish to speak to this? Councillor Howe, did you wish to close?
Just, I don't think we're getting the road reserved and they're getting the swap, councillor Middlemiss, but for that, nothing there, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll put this to the vote now, all those in favour. All hands, all, all eight hands, thank you very much, has passed unanimously. We'll ask if councillor O'Callaghan can come back in before we move along. We only have five more items on the, the agenda in this part of the evening. Opportune time to wish all of the youth councillors who were tuned in this evening, attending our council meeting, watching with interest. I think they have a ten question questionnaire that they need to answer, so they're paying attention and making notes. So while waiting for councillor O'Callaghan to come back in, we just wish them well and hope that we have portrayed the way that a council meeting run and that they've been able to answer all their questions properly. If they have any further questions, I'm sure we'll hear them next Monday night when we have a presentation from the youth council. Mr CEO, is the, the call gone out to councillor Calligan?
Yes, sorry, so I was just calling him myself and I went to voicemail, I sent her a message, so.
She, she may have thought that the last item, we were going to talk for a bit longer and we'd take a cup of tea or something, so.
Possibly, I'll try again in a second.
Alright, we, we're happy to wait. Hello councillor O'Calligan and welcome back. Good to have you here, we've moved past seventeen three, we're now on seventeen four of our agenda, which is Latrobe City Trust trustee appointment. Do I have a mover to this councillors? Councillor Harriman, moving, do I have a second up? Councillor McFarlane. Councillor Harriman, councillor McFarlane, any opposition councillors? No opposition registered, councillor Harriman, did you wish to speak?
No, thanks, Mr Mayor, I think it's pretty self-evident.
Okay, councillor McFarlane.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I agree with councillor Harriman, but just briefly, the, the report acknowledges Mr Jimmy Emmett's contribution as a trustee for the Latrobe City Trust. Thanks for your service and very proud to nominate councillor Middlemiss, who will assume the role until the end of the council term, thank you councillor Middlemiss.
We look forward to having you on board. Any other councillors wish to speak? Councillor Harriman, did you just want to close off?
Oh, good, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, as we have our speaker, we just need to put this to the vote, councillors, all those in favour. Thank you councillors, you nervous? We move to seventeen five, which is the authorisation of a council officer under the Planning and Environment Act 1987. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor White, thank you. Councillor Middlemiss, thank you. Any opposition at all? No opposition registered, councillor White, did you wish to speak?
No, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor Middlemiss? No. We've had no speakers and no opposition registered, we'll pass that unanimously. Thank you very much, no show of hands required for that one. Seventeen six is the presentation of the Audit and Risk Committee minutes from the twelfth of March. Do I have a mover for this? Councillor White? And a second up councillor McFarlane? Any opposition? No, no opposition registered, councillor White, did you wish to speak to this?
No, Mr Mayor.
Councillor McFarlane, did you wish to speak to this? Alright, as we've had those speakers and no opposition registered, once again, that is just carried unanimously without a vote required. We move to seventeen seven, which is the Service Review Prioritisation for 2021 for this council, do I have a mover? Councillor Middlemiss, can see you, do I have a second up councillor Howe, thank you. Any opposition? No opposition registered, councillor Middlemiss, did you wish to speak? Councillor Middlemiss, is there? Did you wish to speak councillor?
Straight forward, Mr Mayor. Oh, sorry, did you miss that? I said it's very straightforward, no need to speak, thank you.
Alright, we, we caught that the second time, there was a bit of a lag in that, so not wanting to speak. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
As we've had no speakers and no opposition registered, I'll carry that one unanimously. Thank you very much. We move to seventeen eight, which is the councillor code of conduct. Seventeen eight, do I have a mover to this? Councillor Gibson is moving. Second up. Councillor Howe, thank you. I have a mover and a second up. Any opposition to this? No opposition registered, councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Sorry, Mr Mayor, look, again, I would endorse the, for the public to have a look at this if they're interested in how council runs and this is all about our code of conduct, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Oh, just to say, this is just another, another thing we, the council has to update because of the new local government, that's all. We always have a fairly good councillor code of conduct, so this just ensures that moving forward, we still have.
Thanks councillor Howe. Any other councillors wish to speak either for or against this seventeen eight? No one else, councillor Gibson, did you wish to close? No, we've had speakers, so we do need to put this to the vote, all those in favour with a raise of a hand. Thank you, I can see all hands, which has passed unanimously, thanks very much councillor. We move to seventeen nine, which is the tabling of the Assembly of Council records. Mover, councillor Middlemiss. And second up was councillor Gibson. Middlemiss, Gibson, any opposition to this? Councillor Middlemiss, did you wish to speak? You did not, councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak? Any, okay, well we have had no speakers, we've had no opposition registered, quite a procedural margin, we just passed that one through unanimously, thank you. Councillors, we move to item eighteen, which is urgent business, my understanding is there's no urgent business before this council is sitting? There is not, thank you very much, which means that we move to close the meeting to the public so we can discuss confidential items. Councillor Gibson, I see you, and councillor White, I note you as well councillor, any opposition to that? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak? No, no speaker, councillor White speaking? No, does not wish to speak, we'll pass that unanimously as well and we'll close the meeting to the public. At this stage, as we tune out, it's just before eight o'clock, well done councillors, we thank the public for tuning in. We're going to move into a closed item and discuss that before we come back. So thank you very much for tuning in and we will see you next month at our extraordinary council meeting, which is held on the first Monday of every month. So thank you for joining us, thank you councillors, thank you officers and.